I want to welcome everyone to the Jefferson Township trustee meeting. This is our regular meeting, it started at seven o'clock, that's about 7:03 now. So we will have the pledge allegiance and then we'll start.
It's April 20th, also, the date, April 20th.
April 20th, 2021, thanks Mike. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for, to honor the military, firefighters, sheriff deputies, and road workers that they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you, may we have a roll call please?
Trustee McGuire.
Trustee Mann. Present.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Okay, we are still talking about the minutes for our meetings. We do not have that resolved yet, but we're gonna do some things here to take care of this problem. Do I need to repeat what we're gonna do? We had a lady that was doing the minutes and we had her doing those minutes. So we're gonna get some of these minutes, copies of some to her and let her run that particular, do the minutes to those meetings, then we're gonna get with the trustees and compare these and then we're gonna make a decision on what to do. So that's what we agreed to do with our minutes so far. So we're gonna have this done by the next meeting, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, and trustee Mann, you know where I stand on that. I've done the research, you know, I couldn't find anybody else in the state of Ohio, because I mean, I didn't go to every flipping township and every jurisdiction, but I looked up a lot of them and, you know, and Mr. Wolf even made that comment originally that he, his Clay Township did them half, half of his minutes were minute, were done minute, word for word. And I went to his meetings and that was not the case. And they only did one in the history of their, their officer has been there like 20 some years. She said in the time she's been there, they had one meeting, there was a legal issue and they hired a dictator. But I really truly believe we need to go away, the issue in getting the minutes done is we're doing it word for word, there is so much work involved in doing it word for word. We need to go back to what everybody else does, what we used to do, an outline. You do an outline of the minutes and it can get done, they approve the next, it's so much easier to approve. If it's something you want to know about, then you pull up the audio, the audio's out there and whatever. But anyway, you know where I lead, where I'm, I really do believe that we need to go away from the word by word, it's not working.
Okay.
May I make a comment on that? Ohio, Ohio Revise Code says that it's actually up to the trustees to determine how they want to do the minutes.
Thank you.
It's not suggested that you do them word for word, there's no word says we have to do them word for word. But it is up to the trustees to make the determination of how they want to do the minutes. My comment though is just to make that clear, but my comment though is, again, when and if you do hire an administrative assistant, you may want to consider, to save some money, that that person, part of their job may be to do the minutes, how you want them to be done. That's just my suggestion, so maybe you should consider that, to put that in their job description when you go to hire somebody, to save money, because who knows how much it's gonna cost right now? The last time we had them do it, it was, I forget the amount of money, but, and we had some done. It was cheaper by, I think trustee McLaughlin had some done, there's other options. But, but one clear thing, please look at the resolution you guys approved, because I thought it said it was gonna take the current Zoom meeting minutes that were already transcribed by GoTranscript and that the new transcriber was going to, what's the word, proofread them, proof them and make sure they were correct. So please make sure that's what, that's how I interpreted the resolution, so please look at that again.
Well, and if you, that's correct Tracy, and if you looked at resolution, we're gonna pay somebody $5,000, there was 46 hours, give or take a little bit, 46 and a half hours of minutes last year that we paid to transcribe. So you're gonna pay somebody $5,000 to listen to 46 hours of, and I bet there's a lot of residents that would do this, 46, so I'm gonna listen to, I'm gonna spend a week's worth of a little bit of overtime and listen to an audio tape and read this transcript that was made and verify that it's correct. And you're gonna give me five grand, I'll take that job.
Okay, my interpretation of that was that I thought we were gonna do a sample of those minutes and give that to that individual and let her do them and then we see what the results are and then we can make a decision if everybody agrees with that.
And here we go again, the word for word is the issue, it's causing us so many problems, you know.
Well, I don't have no problem of, of doing, you know, just the minutes, let that individual do those minutes, I don't have no problem. But right now, we agreed on word for word. So I'm saying, are you agreeing with this, that we can take a sample? You said there's 44, we'll decide on a number and pull those samples and give them to this person and let her dictate those minutes and then we sit down and talk about it.
Well, that's the resolution that was voted on, yeah, okay.
I guess it may, that may be in the future, this is for the minutes for 2020, right? It is gonna continue on for the minutes for 2021, because we don't have any minutes for either year. So maybe that's something the trustees may need to determine what they want to do, if they want to continue on with it once you get the samples. So I guess that's something you probably need to look at in the future.
I guess that's all we got, trustee Mann.
We lost him, oh there he is.
You muted, man. There you go.
Okay. All right, are we done with the minutes? Okay, all right, fiscal officers' report.
Okay, so I sent you guys an email, the trustees, and I think, I think the department heads also got the fiscal report. I don't know what we're gonna do in the future to get the copy of that to the citizens on the website. I don't know how that was done before, I wasn't involved in that. But if anybody wants a copy, let me have your email and I will send you a copy of the report that, you know, that you get, that you were getting every month at the first time, every meeting, I'm sorry. The bills are coming a lot better, but still, some are still late. It's getting a lot better, we're just gonna have to improve on the process. As I mentioned, the trustees in the email, I got, Mr. Wolf sent me six o'clock yesterday, 24 invoices, I probably won't have them looked through and straightened out until next week. Hopefully, none of them are too late and I'll get them done, that's what I'll be focusing on. I have some personal issues I have to deal with with my daughter having surgery. So I won't be getting to them until probably the end of this week, so maybe a little bit later next week before I get those done. One last thing is, back in July, September, the fire department station 15 account for Spectrum Time Warner Cable was closed and at that point, we had a credit of $18. So instead of carrying that credit and keep on carrying, I think about March or maybe it was before February, requested a credit, I thought they were gonna send me a check, they sent me a master form with $18 credit on it. It was the road, it was not the road, the fire department's credit for their account. So I told the fire department, just instead of me trying to figure out what to do, spend it on some gas and then we'll just, credit for the gas. So they, they put, I don't know which vehicle, Chief Wilcox will have to tell you, it was in one of the vehicles, fire vehicles, they put gas, $18 of gas in one of the vehicle. So that's where that card goes, I'm filing it in the file in case somebody ever wants to see it, but it's gonna be on the file under the check that was, last check that was written back in September of 2020. That card is no, is gonna be expired anyway, so nobody's gonna be able to use it besides there's nothing on it because it's been spent. So all that's gonna be on the record if anybody ever wants to see that. So I just wanted to get it, let you guys know and have it on record that that's what happened with the credit we got from Spectrum Time Warner Cable. They did, I went through a whole bunch of mails trying to get a check and they said they couldn't get me a check, so that's what was the decision. And I hope you guys didn't mind that I made that decision because we had to hurry up and, you trustees, because we had to hurry up and get that spent before the card expired and we would have lost the money.
Ms. Edwards, you did get the receipt for that gasoline action?
I have the receipt, it's all gonna be filed on the record with that, with that, with that check that was written. Yes, I have the receipt and everything. I just don't, it doesn't have which vehicle I don't think you put it in.
It was in vehicle chief two, that vehicle.
Okay, all right, that one.
Vehicle I drive in, the fire chief was with me at the time, we filled it up.
Okay, chief two is the one that you drive?
Correct, the 2020 Explorer.
It's the 2020 Explorer, Ford Explorer, okay. All right, I have this in the record if anybody wants to see it. I have the receipt, yes I do, it was spent on the 24th of March. The card's in there too, and like I said, the card can't be used. But wanted to get that on record. And as far as everything else, unless anybody has any questions of me, that's the end of my report. And again, like I said, if you want a copy of the report, one page, full summary, and I can email it to any of the citizens, because I think all the departments and the trustees can have a copy of mine.
Good evening, I had a question.
Mr. Fletcher.
Yes, sir.
If you could hold your question, we'd appreciate it, but if it's something you have to say now, then go ahead, but you're.
Yeah, let's close out the financial, let's close out the financial report first, please. So you're done, you're done Tracy, correct?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report, pay the, pay all the bills, warrants and vouchers.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the fiscal officer's report. Tracy Edwards, please, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Randall, if you can wait fine, if not, go ahead with your question.
Well, the question, I just wanted, I just wanted clarification. When the fiscal officer said that they were, they were going to end up paying bills late? Could you, are these, are any of these bills, bills that affect the community? Like services to the community, I'm just curious.
Mr. Fletcher, I'll answer that, Mr. Mann, if you don't mind, is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
There are bills that just gonna get a late fee, like deep here now, Vectron, you know, stuff like that, it won't turn off our electricity, but it's stuff that penny here, penny there adds up.
Okay, so these are services that, are these services that affect the office in which you all are working? Or services that affect the residents, that's what my question is?
Okay, I'm sorry, most of them are affect the offices. There's not any big, there's none right now, but there are, there have been times when there have been affected some of the services for the township, but none currently. So I'm trying to stop that before it happens.
Okay, well, thank you both for giving me clarification, thank you, Mr. Mann, and thank you fiscal officer.
Okay. Now going back to the fiscal officer's report, and this is just on to her, but we talked about, let's see, I lost my spot. Anyway, let's, let's go to old business now, item one. We talked about the meeting minutes and we talked about Resolution 21-012, approving a permanent budget. And then, so in doing that, we talked about some things in the party department that was not on the budget. And one item is 2111-220-0750-2012 and 2014 and 15 and 16. And Mrs. Edwards told us that these monies were gonna be okay, there was no problem. So then, that takes us back here to Resolution number 21-012. And that particular resolution, and we, if we pass that resolution, we're not gonna have any problems with the budget, is what you were saying, Mrs. Edwards. Is that where we are?
You did already pass that budget, that resolution, you just have not signed it in the mailbox and I have not posted it on the website because you haven't signed it yet. So the only person that has signed it is trustee McLaughlin and you guys passed it in the last, well, the meeting on the 24th, I think, that was the date. Yeah, and so all you guys need to do is sign it now that I've given you the clarification. I mean, trustee McGuire and trustee Mann need to sign it and they're sitting in the mailbox waiting for your signature, I just need, and I understand why you need a clarification and I hope that I provided that information to you.
Okay. All right, any new business we need to discuss?
Can we still talk about old business, I have another issue on old business.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so being over roads a couple of years back, owning a farm, taking care of vegetation at sewer plants and water plants, I do and maintain a spray license. And back in 17, before my time as a trustee, there was a resolution, about, here it is, 17006, passed by the trustees of that time, requiring, the Jefferson Township trustees require the road superintendent to attend training classes and then obtain the required licensing for spraying of vegetation, kill and application of other lawn fertilization projects in Jefferson Township. I think we need our road superintendent, I mean, that's a resolution, it's on the books, the road superintendent needs to proceed on and obtain his spray license. I believe I'm the only one in the organization that has a spray license. I did say in my trustees' comments at the last meeting, I was going to do that. I pulled my sprayer out this past weekend and, you know, you just pulled it out, I had some frozen parts, some parts that got frozen, busted over the winter with the cold weather. It did not get completely drained, my fault, it's my sprayer. So I've got parts ordered, when those come in, I will spray the cemetery, I'll get with Chief Wilcox and do the fire department and do the spraying that's needed to help out in the interim. But being road superintendent, the road superintendent per resolution on the books needs to acquire the spray license, I just, I'd like to see that happen. That's what I got for old business.
Anyone have any comments on that? All right, Mr. McLaughlin, we'll pass that on to the people that are not here. All right, anything else, old business wise? Let's move to new business, anything there? So we do have a resignation to, what are we gonna accept or not from Adrian Jones? So we need to discuss that here now. Or we make a motion to accept that resolution.
Don't we have, that resolution's in our pack, let me find it here, I'm pretty sure I saw it in there. And Ms. Edwards, can you be so kind as to give us, we ask this every meeting, I guess how well prepared we are, the next trustee, the next resolution number?
That would be Resolution 21-018.
Okay. So the copy I, the copy I have needs a, has a typo in it because it's 20, so it needs to be changed to 21 and what add, 18, but I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 21-018. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Administrator Assistant backslash Human Resource Manager, Ms. Adrian Jones, effective the end of business day 4/16/2021.
I'll second that motion. May we have a roll call, please, or any questions?
There was something in here that I think, I think you caught one of them, was it 21, 20, should be 21-018, but I thought there was something else that wasn't clear.
So effective the, how did we determine the date of termination on 4/16? When was the termination given to her boss, Steve Wolf, and how did that date acquire?
That's your question, trustee McLaughlin. The resignation was slated in my day on Wednesday, so I'll give you that date. It was not his birthday. See here. It was the 7th?
Was it the 7th or the, was it the Wednesday before the 16th or the Wednesday before the week, I'm sorry, 7th?
It was the 7th, it was when we received the resignation, it was dated April 3rd. Trustee Jones was not, not on April 3rd because she took a vacation day. So we served it on the 7th, and that was the date was the, was 4/16. And that was her resignation.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, any more questions?
Um, yeah, and there's some changes I think that need to be changed, the last word I, it says the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees direct the administrator to write up a letter donating the acceptance of said resignations and a letter of appreciation to be sent to each employee. Should that be kind of, is there only one employee, right, and only one resignation? Am I correct on that? It's right before the now, therefore.
Mrs. Jones is the only person that's, that's resigning, for resigning.
I'm gonna.
You're correct Tracy, yes, that needs corrected, that type, that's a typo. Resignation is a singular word, not a plural, no S. And the letter of appreciation needs to be sent to.
The employee.
The employee, yes.
So when I put this in your mailbox, you're gonna, several places you're gonna have to initial, like the 20 to 21, and all those little ink marks, look through the thing and kind of initial those.
Yes.
Unless somebody has the original, I can retype it before, or we make the corrections and before I put it in the box, I don't have the original.
Well, the person who voted on it definitely has to leave a document, so make those corrections, leave that document and that's what they have to sign, because that's the document.
Okay, well then I made the correction, so you'll have to initial all those places.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Any other new business?
We need to vote, we need to vote on that, trustee.
Okay, sorry about that. May we have a vote?
Did anybody, did anybody, I missed a motion?
Miss, Mr. McLaughlin made a motion, I second.
And he, yes, okay.
Hi, trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes, resolution passes. Any other new business to discuss?
Other than now that this has been accepted, what's the next step?
Well, the next step will be to go ahead and advertise for a person to fill that position.
Need to post a job. We had conversation, I believe in the work session, about making a job description for that, I think Tracy was talking about that, and that can be very important before the job is posted, that what we want the person to do, so they know what they're, what they're answering to, what tasks they're answering of, answering to. But I believe they need to do the minutes, I think they need to do payroll, answer the phone, you know, answer somebody knocking on the window there between the hours of, when we're open, nine to noon or whatever it is, that kind of general stuff. You got anything else to add to that, trustee Mann?
The only thing that I have, I think we need to hear about the Paycor, what they can do for us, because that's gonna be a kind of a little sticky situation because everybody's that's involved, everything that has to be turned in for the record.
And being, being as part of the record, whatever Paycor is going to say they're gonna do, we need it in writing with a quote, with a cost involved. I just don't want to hear one, another employee state that they're gonna do it for this amount of money, we need it in writing.
We can do that. Anything else?
Not I. Chief Wilcox, you had anything new, new you want to discuss?
I've got it in my report here.
Okay, good.
I just want to say one more thing, I know that Mr. Wolf said he was gonna take care of it, but I'm really, I'm really upset about that. I'm really upset about that door. Because I'm tired of getting cut on my hand because it's hard to get the key out, so. As soon as possible, I'd like that to resolve, whether it be getting the keys. Or getting that lock fixed, but I, it's just not my key. And the alarm situation. The alarm situation, I understand a lot has to do with the county, but. If we, the squeaky wheel gets to oil, if we don't keep bugging them. There's not, anything gonna get done and it just keeps lingering on and we're paying that, we're paying our rent, we're paying it on time. We're paying, because Mr. Wolf has to pay a month ahead of time. So we pay two payments at a time. So they should be fixing that building. We are a tenant, we're meeting our contract and I think. That that's in our contract, and Mr. Wolf can clarify that, that they should be fixing these things and we shouldn't have to wait. Or we should at least be getting the status. And according to what Mr. Wolf said in the uh, in the work session, he didn't have a status. And that's, I don't think that should be acceptable, in my opinion. Again, I'm not a trustee, but I am being the one that's being hurt. So that's all I have.
Alright, uh, Tracy asked me to clarify something. There was a fourth party knew about anybody getting hurt with the key, so there couldn't be any response to put a nail. But nobody reported it to me. So I live in the front of the meeting after this meeting and talking, trying to get a hold of the manager. So that's number one. You want to report something or no one knows. Now, on the security system that we talked about in the, in the work session, I will get a status from him as well. Because it is county equipment and we don't have any jurisdiction, but we can go to the school for duty, one hundred percent. But you'll have to let somebody know. Thank you.
Okay, I guess.
Being notified, I'm officially not, I, I was thinking it was my fault, but three times, three strikes, you're out.
Okay, we're ready for department reports. Do we have anything from zoning and our coach department, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, uh, uh, we have uh applications that are being received with a zoning and manager position. Our physician closes out on the twenty third of April. New, after the new date, we will have what applications have been received. Uh, I will send those to all three trustees and review. And, and then we will send those applications out. For necessary background checks and etc. We get, we find, you know, we're at the timeline of those vendors. As soon as the vendors send back their, their uh background checks, with the application, trustees will be able to make a decision. What was an applicant that this year needs. In your pocket, I have a uh, a, a two hundred point three from zoning. I've been thrown that room without being asked, but if someone has to be the zoning job. And so I'm observing that opportunity at that project for now. I'm looking at seven new applications including to.